Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen's Meetings of January 22, 2019. Roll call, please.
All five selectmen present this evening, as well as Town Administrator and the Town Council.
Thank you. Kathy, how would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Ooh, her carriage.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we have announcements. Tony, do you have anything? Mary?
No.
Peter?
No.
Patrick?
All right, I do actually have an announcement. No, I have it on my phone, believe it or not. So you gotta kinda hang in there till I get it off of my phone. All right, so, the sewer commission is going to be having a meeting here at Town Hall on Saturday at 10:00 a.m. in the Town Hall Auditorium, in the auditorium. And the reason for this meeting is that they're gonna be doing a lining project that stretches from Swift Beach up Minot Ave., and they're gonna be lining that. Now, there'll be some inconveniences along the way when they do it. So you can go there and you can find out what they're going to be doing, where the inconveniences are gonna be, 'cause they have to dry out the pipe, basically, in certain pieces as they line it. So it matters, they have to jump it over in different areas in order to make it work, and of course, they gotta keep the sewer flowing, 'cause they can't stop the sewer from going down the line. And of course, that's one of our main lines. So it's a good idea, if you have any questions, or you're worried, or anything, go there and find out if you're affected in those areas, all the way down, from Swift Beach down to Minot Ave., any of those roads along the way. That's where that's all gonna take place, 10 o'clock on Saturday morning. Okay?
That's it?
That's all I got.
Okay. Next would be citizens' comments. Mrs. Slavin, all the way in the back.
Notes. The sewer line isn't hitting Minot Ave., it's coming down Swift's behind-the-track out to the main pump station on, you said-
It affects those people on Minot Ave. It goes behind it, but it does affect them.
Well, I think the people from Swift Beach would be more concerned, 'cause it's gonna stop at the pump station on the backside of Main Street. Okay, Friday, February 1st, taxes are due. I guess the question is, the Town Hall is closed, will the Treasurer Office be open to accept tax taxes on the 1st, on Friday?
Same as they've done last time.
What was that?
Same as you just said.
What, they'll be open?
Yeah.
I guess I didn't see that posted anywhere. Sorry. Okay. Now, several months ago, is there a possibility we can get an update of where we stand in Wareham to get out of the Boston housing grid to go into something cheaper? There's been no updates that I've heard of as to where that project stands. So somewhere down the line, if we in town can get an idea where that, what's up with Charter. I went online, and I still have a 2016 charter. Is there any place I can go to get a current, updated version of the Town Charter?
Clerk's office.
Clerk's office. It can't get posted online for anybody else to see.
We'll work on it.
Okay. So I understand that the selectmen are going to consider a warrant article to do away with a Charter Review Committee. The comment was made at the last meeting, I'm gonna paraphrase, that we didn't read a lot of books, and we didn't take a test, and therefore, we don't, we, as general non-lawyers, cannot understand what the Charter is. My strong recommendation for everybody out there, if you see something you wanna see changed in the article, put in a citizens' article. That's the only way you're gonna get it changed, because more than likely, the Charter Review Committee will be removed at the next town meeting. So I'm going to the clerk's office, and I'm gonna take out some forms for a citizens' article for Springtown Meeting, and I recommend others do the same if there's something they'd like to see corrected in our charter. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Next, board comments. Tony? Mary?
I have nothing.
Peter?
Yeah, this morning, Madam Moderator, Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, Derek, and the Chairman of the Fincom, Bernie Pidgen, and myself met to go over the town meeting process. Spent a lot of time banging back and forth, how we can make it more streamlined, how we can make it more efficient, how we can have things that go into the warrant that more resemble what eventually gets voted on at town meeting on the floor than we do now. What we do now is, we close off the warrant early in February. After that, we typically, especially with planning articles, or articles, zoning articles, they have to go before the Planning Board for public hearing. We stick a placeholder in, you go to the Planning Board for your public hearing with a draft article that's available in the clerk's office, but it's really not, you know, part of the actual warrant at that point, 'cause the warrant's already been posted. There may be changes, there may not be changes, coming out of the public hearing, and then something else gets presented at town meeting. We've got a requirement in our charter that the warrant be posted 45 days before the commencement of town meeting. And further complicating that fact is that Article 1 of the Springtown Meeting is the annual election. So you've gotta get that posted, not 45 days before the 4th Monday in April, but 45 days before the 1st Tuesday in April. So it tends to lead to some confusion, it tends to make it sort of a rushed process. So what we've decided to ask Town Council to do is come up with a draft that would set the warrant posting day back into probably the month of March sometime, and also along with that, to move the town election to May. Another issue with the town election occurring before town meeting is you wind up, especially on boards like the School Committee and the Board of Selectmen, you have an election, and you've got new members who are there for a whopping two weeks and, or is it three weeks and six days, or something like that, before they're expected to go to town meeting. This would cure that, because that's frankly, I think all of us up here have scratched our heads over that one. So that's something that we're gonna ask Attorney Bowen to work on. It's something that we'll review, and we'll decide whether we wanna go forward with a charter change in that regard. But I think it would make town meeting a lot simpler for a lot of people, internally and also for the body itself. You're not gonna have as much confusing information out there, you're not gonna have multiple iterations of the same article, and people getting confused on what they're voting for. There's no reason why, if you set a warrant cutoff date sometime in March, that you can't have the public hearings ahead of time and get the actual article that you intend to vote on into the warrant. That's the thinking here, anyway. So I just want people to be alerted that we are working on that, and we're trying to straighten it out.
Just for clarification also, that if this becomes an article for town meeting, it'll be effective next year, if just everybody understands that.
Yeah.
Unless we come up with something for the fall town meeting at the same time.
Well, the other thing is too, is this would be a request to amend the charter, which of course, becomes a request for a special act to the legislature, so you, you know, we can vote it, if the body votes it at the end of April, we still gotta wait for the legislature to act on it, and sometimes that takes a while.
Just a quick comment, MLK Breakfast was this past Monday, and we basically, it was a very nice event, as always, the Boys and Girls Club got a very surprise of almost a $10,000 donation as well. The other piece is, just so people understand, the Governor has basically, at the MMA Convention, discussed the budget for the coming year. We'll have the official budget probably another day or so. The state is planning on what they call a 2.7% increase in expected money's coming in this year over the base. So what that means is approximately $30 million more for the cities and towns for their general fund. But remember, there's 351 communities that have to divide up that $30 million, so when you do that, it isn't that much. The Chapter 70 Education Foundation, the recommendations that have been languishing for years, the Governor has committed to actually, in the next month or so, bring bills forth to actually go ahead and start to make the modifications. The City of Brockton and the City of New Bedford have actually sued the state on the education level, and Brockton did this back in 1993, if I remember right, for insufficient funding for education. And if anybody looks at the change in the actual formulas, that was done in 93 because of the Brockton suit, and they're going at it again, and I'm hoping that Wareham joins the suit as well. And that's, and of course, Chapter 90 unfortunately is still at $200 million, so we're still gonna have issues with roads, folks. Thank you. Appointments, reappointments, interviews.
There is no reappointments or interviews today.
No bill from Rich?
Yeah, we do have a bill, but that goes at the end.
Is that the agenda?
We do have a Rich bill.
I've just had one.
Okay.
Okay. We have no license and permits?
No.
Okay, we have Cultural Council, where it come up? Thank you for coming.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
A pleasure.
This is Mary Beth Cormier, and I'm Kathy Gleason. We're on the Cultural Council, Wareham Cultural Council, and we have four other members, Wendy Brizalli, Kristy LeJoux, Kristen Lyons, and Linda Scharf, Scharf, sorry Linda, Linda Scharf, on our committee. We've just awarded 20 grants. The state, well, the state gave us the money from their budget, and we were given $7,100 to add, and we had some left over where the grants from last year were not used, so it's turned over. So we had $9,138 that we could give out as cultural grants this year. And we awarded 20. We had 29 applications, and according to our priorities, which we have to list, is to help fund community-oriented programs in the arts, humanities, and sciences that provide the most benefit to the Wareham citizens. And that's where we focused ours, that these events would take place in Wareham, or would take place with most of our participants from Wareham. So we have 20, and I think you all have a list of them?
Yes, we do.
The different people, and how much they were all awarded? And it comes out to $9,138, which we had to make sure it was set for that. So, and some of them have already started. So are there any questions?
No. If you would like to read it off to the public, so the public will know, or if you have a copy for the newspapers, they can put it there.
I do have copies for the newspapers. I mean, I could read all 20 of them, but...
Well, do you want Peter to read it for you? Or would you like to read it?
Sure. Go right ahead, Peter.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Friends of the Wareham Free Library, for their Humanities Project, project title Wareham Free Library Summer Reading Program, received $498. Jackson Gilman for Arts, Deacon School in Richmond, received $485. The John W. Deacon Elementary School for Arts, project title Building Community One Shell at a Time, received $350. Mass Audubon, South Coast Wildlife Sanctuaries, under the Science Project, if their Osprey program, received $300. Onset Bay Association Inc., under Arts, project title Chalk Full of Fun Street Painting Festival, received $485. Onset Bay Association, again, under Arts, project title Free Onset Film Festival, received $485. Onset Bay Association, under Arts, For Illumination Night, received $485. And Onset Bay Association, under Arts, received $485 for the Summer of Love Concert Series. John Root, under Science, project is Edible Perennial Gardening and Landscaping, received $350. Song Keepers Limited, under Arts, project title Explanation Hip-Hop Jazz Theater, received $485. Wareham Cooperative School for Humanities, project is a People's History focusing on communities of color, received $450. Wareham Council on Aging, under Arts, the project is an art class for $485. Wareham High School, under Humanities, project is U.S. Government and Politics Field Trip, $400. Wareham Land Trust, under Science, project Nature Exploration Awareness and Education, $485. Wareham Middle School Arts and Illuminated Adventure, $485. Wareham Middle School Arts, project is the Zeitarian Theater Field Trip, $485. Wareham Middle School Drama Club, under Arts, project is the Wareham Middle School Drama Club, $485. Wareham Minute Man and Militia Companies, under Humanities, for Education, received $485. Wareham Oyster Festival, under Humanities, received $485. And Kirk Whipple of Cranberry Coast Concerts, under Arts, received $485 for the Cranberry Coast Concert Season 14. And that's all of them.
That is, that's 20.
You may wanna check with OBA, make sure on the movie, they, the OBA had their meetings, their board meetings, and if the item wasn't generating enough money to be profitable for them to do it, not show profit, they were dropping some things. I thought I heard, and I'm probably wrong, but I thought there was a chance that the movie program might have been dropped.
It might have, they've put in an application and went through, so...
It's a while ago, but I think they've made some recent decisions.
Maybe the $485 will change their minds.
Be nice if it did, it's a nice event, actually.
Yeah, well, that's, we're hopeful that it will.
Thank you very much for what you do.
Yes, thanks. And that's a lot of work going through 29 applications, and having to deny anybody, I'm sure, makes it difficult-
Right.
-to come down with the finalists, and so, that's a lot of work, and we're appreciative of it.
The town's very lucky, we were able to get that much, we get an increase this year, what, $900 from the state?
Yes.
And so, maybe next year we'll get even more, we'll see what happens. Each town is different.
Talk to him, he's the, he's the rainmaker up there.
If you need anything at all during the year, please come see us, let me know, we'll put it on the agenda.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thanks for your work.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Patrick, next item.
All right, so we have a discussion and vote include articles in Springtown Meeting now. There's only 10 here so far that are listed.
We have somebody else.
Someone else.
I wanted to address the Arts Council.
Just what?
No.
No, you can only do that during citizens' participation.
It was on the agenda, so I thought that was only for things not on the agenda.
No, it's the, the actual council came here to tell us certain things, that's what was on only. Thank you.
All right, so, we have, there's 10 on there right now, I'm gonna read them. Elections of Officers, which we have on everyone, as everyone knows. Recurring Business, Compensation of Certain Appointed Officials, there's FY20 Revolving Funds, Occasional Reports, FY20 Capital Plan, FY20 Budget, Emergency Medical Services, Upper Cape Cod Regional Vocational Tech, and the Water Pollution Control Facility. And I move we include them all in the warrant.
Second.
Any discussion from the board? Any questions?
No.
None heard? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0. We have to make sure, again, that we try and get all this done, and hearings were required in advance, so we don't have the same as the last time where things were just not there.
Yeah. Well, part of the issue, the budget's always a placeholder, for example, 'cause you never know until a close-to-town meeting, and some of the budgeting items are as well.
But that's normal, because you don't have the final numbers from the state.
Right.
I'm just saying in general, we need to, that's why we're gonna make a change to the charter.
Right.
So these are all included, this, none of the others have been added to it yet, with some of the special ones that we have put together that we talked about, they haven't got here, but they'll get here.
Right.
At some point, we should get them on there, and...
Next week, we're gonna have to add as much as we can.
Start talking about it. Of course, the next thing is, any possible articles?
Yep.
Anybody wanna talk about, we have those.
Like, well, there's no point in belaboring it, I spoke about it last week, you've all got it in your packets. I would urge the board to just, I mean, we're not making recommendations now, so that comes later, to put on the article to amend the Charter Review Committee.
And we also have the discussion, excuse me, on the actual changing the dates of the town meeting start, town meeting...
Yeah, with that one, though, if we're gonna meet on Thursday to try to come up with actual language, why don't we wait for that? You have the language here in your packets for this one, so...
We're not gonna put it on, I'm just saying that's gonna be something coming, that's all.
Right.
That's what this is.
Oh, there'll be more, we gotta wait for the Community Preservation Articles, we've gotta wait for, you know, any other articles, petition articles, so on and so forth.
We have to wait for the zoning articles.
Right.
And the zoning articles, that was supposed to be for further study also, et cetera.
Right. I think there were s-
There's a couple of street layouts and stuff, too, that might be...
Yep.
One we're waiting on. Okay. Anybody else have anything that they're looking to add at this point in time?
Get a vote on mine?
Yes.
Put it on?
Yes. That's your motion, to put it on?
Yep, that's my motion.
Need a second? Any questions?
Clarification on the motion?
Excuse me?
I have a question, a clarification.
Sorry. Any questions?
I do not.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0.
Okay, and again, that's, we're just, at this point, we're just putting things on. Recommendations come later, although obviously, we're gonna recommend that we have a budget, things like that.
Well, we'll, we'll see how the vote comes down.
Yeah.
You never know.
No.
All right. Next would be, Consider and Vote to Sunset the Bike Path Committee, it says.
Okay, I'll explain this one. The Bike Path Committee has been in place for quite a while. The town actually voted, CPC gave them $200,000 for engineering work, et cetera, for the bike path. That money has been spent and done, which is a requirement for the state monies. And over the last year and a half, almost two years, the Bike Path Committee really has not been meeting, 'cause the members haven't been there. And even at the regional level, on the, what they call the South Coast Bike Way, nobody from Wareham is showing up except myself. So it's really not working well, and we actually have a possibility of, we could lose our $5 million project. So we've been doing work, Derek's been getting some of it done, so between the two of us, we've been keeping it going. They have two members, they have nobody really showing up or anything else that are interested. The Friends of the Bike Path Committee have disappeared as well. So at this point here, it doesn't seem much sense to do it, to continue them.
Question with, with the Friends of the Bike Path Committee, did they actually raise any money?
No.
So there's, if they dissolve, then they don't have to worry about satisfying the AG with the money they've raised?
We're not, we're not, we have nothing to do with the Bike, Friends of the Bike Path.
Right. No, but I was just wondering, just generally speaking, typically, if you have a Friends organization, they've got funds and...
Yeah, they can gift it to any like organization.
Okay.
So it doesn't matter. It's just as long-
Are you saying they're broke, anyway?
There's nothing there, Peter.
Okay.
So I'm recommending that we dissolve, we, since we put the committee together, I'm recommending we sunset the committee at this point.
Okay.
That's my motion.
We sunset, are you making the motion? All right, second.
Well, under Robert's rules, I'll make it.
Fine.
You made the motion?
Yeah.
Second.
May I address the board on this?
No, you can't.
Right to the committee.
No, you can't.
You could allow discussion.
It's not how it works.
No. Just so you understand, on the agenda, if it's an item which we take public comment, it's noted. If not, it doesn't happen that way.
You can choose to allow it.
No, not choose to, it has to be published that way. 'Cause everybody has the same right to come up if we publish it. If we don't, it's not. Any other questions, the board?
No.
I don't.
None heard? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0.
Any other town business not reasonably anticipated?
No, 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 no.
We got a fence viewer.
Oh, sorry, I'm sorry, a fence viewer.
A fence viewer came up, because we have a resident that's having a dispute with a neighbor.
Yeah.
And by mass law, I believe the fence viewer is required by the town. We looked into it, we don't have one, so I think at this point here, I believe the way it should work is that we would request Mr. Sullivan to somehow put out a request for hiring a fence viewer, or assigning someone to it.
It's always been a citizen, was my understanding.
Yeah, it's, we have to put out someone for it.
But that's an unpaid position.
I thought it was $5 a day or something, if it worked.
Yeah, we've always, the last time we had somebody that's-
2015 was last time.
A lot dates back to the 1600s, it's probably a farthing a day, or something like that.
Maybe we can request to see if we can get someone to be a fence viewer.
We need to do something, 'cause we've had an official request, and we have to comply.
Yeah.
I know a retired gentleman who'd be really good at something like that. What do you think? I, I don't see that person in the room, but I do see a spouse.
No, I see it.
Anyone really like it?
He's tall enough to look over fences.
Exactly.
Bottom line is, what do we, what do we wanna do? We have to comply. So how do we do this?
Yeah, we gotta do it.
If we're... Is it, does it have to be a citizen, a resident? What is the, what's the...
It's a fence viewer.
Just have to have a fence viewer, period.
Okay. We'll, we'll post for it. We'll look it up, what the, what the monetary fund is, and...
Yeah, five bucks.
Whatever.
We can look for it. Okay.
Can we chisel them down to 350?
Doesn't really work out very well, but that's okay. Next, is any other town business not reasonably anticipated the last 48 hours?
Tony? Mary?
Nope.
Peter?
I got nothing.
Patrick? Alan, no.
Administrator's report.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk, Chairman, members of the board, we're just working on getting the budget done for, for the first draft, if you will, and it looks like, I was hoping that tomorrow we would see our first inkling from the Governor for what we'd be seeing from Chapter 70 funds and such, that's what the emails seemed to think. It's, the timing's always tough, it comes out directly after the MMA, which is right when we need our first budget iteration. So we'll probably, I think we'll get that out on Friday to everyone, I'm hoping I'll have numbers to work with either Wednesday or Thursday.
And those numbers won't take effect of any changes, they plan to come down next two or three months, as everybody knows.
All right, so...
Which really messes it up.
So it's an interesting process.
Yep.
It is?
Yeah.
Liaison reports.
Tony? Mary?
Nothing.
Peter?
Yeah, I'll, I'll do this as a little bit of a segue into next week, when we talk about the town meeting articles. The Redevelopment Authority is probably going to be coming forward with two articles for town meeting. One is to propose a redevelopment overlay district for Wareham Village. This would also include going past Bessie Park and down towards British Landing as well, because there's some economic opportunities there as well. It wouldn't open up the place up just willy-nilly to uses, but the thought is to expand some of the uses there. What we have is, you know, landlords that have owned the buildings in the village for a long, long time, you know, they've got tenants in there, the buildings are paid off, they're not really incentivized to do a lot with their buildings, or to attract tenants that might actually, in the long run, bring more economic activity, both to the village and also to them, in the form of higher rent. So what we're gonna do is propose a redevelopment overlay district zoning for that, so that activity, both to the village and also to them in the form of higher rent. So what we're gonna do is propose a redevelopment overlay district, zoning for that, so that when the time comes for the selectmen who actually approve redevelopment districts, it's not town meeting. Town meeting approves the zoning if you're gonna change it, but the selectmen actually approve what, what is a redevelopment district and what areas are included in it, that the, there will be zoning available, zoning changes to sort of free things up down there and allow some more things going on. Of course, where this is, would be rezoning, it has to go before a planning board hearing. We believe that the planning board will be meeting sometime in February to do the public hearings on the various zoning articles, including this one, so that that gets done in plenty of time, and the actual final articles can make it into the finance committee handbook, and so you don't have to rely on picking something up at the door at town meeting, looking at it, and then somebody looks in the handbook and sees something else. And it should be a more orderly process this time than it's been the past couple of meetings. The other thing the Redevelopment Authority is gonna be looking for is to see if the town will vote to transfer ownership of the Littleton Drive parcel off of Swiss Beach Road, which currently sits under the control of the town, and ownership of the town, it was taken by tax title. And there's, there's been some interest in possibly taking that parcel and redeveloping it into senior housing. There's a dire need for senior housing in this town. We're limited with the properties the Housing Authority has in terms of expansion. You can't, you can add here and there, but you can't add multiple units in there. So we're hopeful that town meeting will vote to do this and allow the Redevelopment Authority to, you know, put out requests for, for qualifications, requests for proposals, and so on and so forth, and see if we can get people interested in constructing senior housing. Because again, we do have a dire need for it. I believe the waiting list for the Housing Authority properties is somewhere between 700 and 800 people. So it's something that we've got to get going on. So this property is just sitting there, we've had it for a number of years, so the Redevelopment Authority would like to have at it, see what we can do.
That's it?
Yeah.
Thank you. This particular week, basically last week, we had, oh.
You want me to go?
I forgot. I apologize.
Twice you've done that now.
Only once.
Just saying. No, you did it the first time, right?
Not really.
But I'm gonna let you slide on it.
You sure, no?
Yeah, I'm giving you a break. All right, so I have some sewer issues to discuss, if you don't mind. All right, first off, you know, I mentioned that they're gonna have that meeting, and I think everybody should attend that's in those areas, and try to help themselves in, in what's actually gonna happen. I think they're gonna find out it won't be as bad as everybody probably is thinking it's gonna be, and maybe that will be even better. So, the other thing is, is that we have a couple of issues. One, remember we talked about a bylaw, maybe putting on in October for mandatory connections and so on? Well, it turns out we already have one. Did you know that?
Yeah.
Yeah. And the one that we have requires written notification, and then the year starts ticking, not less than a year. So, you know, we just want to, the sewer commission wants to know that that's, that the bylaw is not a problem, that there's any issues. So I want town council to review it, because they want to send out the notifications. There's about 89 properties that should have been connected a long time ago.
That's what we're trying to fix, was we've informed Mr. Campina and the commissioners of the defects in the bylaw beforehand. So the fact that this keeps on getting.
So this, does the bylaw actually have a defect? Is that what you've determined? Okay. So that's what it was. Because they asked me the question, and I needed to get them the answer. So I guess the way we get the answer is to say that the bylaw has a defect in it that needs to be repaired.
Yeah, I think it's, and, excuse me for saying this, it's kind of redundant. We've been going through this and explaining it for several years now, and maybe it isn't getting to the sewer commissioners, I don't know. But we always explain how it needs to be fixed, and then it doesn't happen until the next go around where somebody gets ticked off. So I would love to fix it now, because it's driving me crazy to have this keep on coming back to us.
Well, so then let's absolutely plan on if it needs to be repaired, then I will let them know that they can't rely on the bylaw, in which case they can then, you know, hold off doing anything forthwith. And then we will make the announcement or the, for October, see if we can repair it so that it is functional.
I'm, I'm just wondering what the defect is, because I can tell you back when they did the sewer bedment down Oak Street, they had no problem getting the information to me and telling me I had X amount of time to hook up or else. As a matter of fact, there may even be something over in the Registry of Deeds in the form of a lien that won't be released until I pay the damn thing off. So they, I, I don't know, I don't know how they managed to not notify, I, I can, I can see where properties might have been missed in the process and this, that, and the other thing, but from, from my perspective, the bylaw works really well.
You were snuckered.
Huh?
You were snuckered.
Damn it, I want my money back.
Secondly, Bourne came up again. You know, there's a huge chunk of money, apparently, but one side believes and the other side doesn't and whatever. And this has been ongoing for years now, and we really need to resolve that, because there is going to be some assessments coming up right now, that they're going to have to be adding to this. And of course, they voted the other night to add an assessment to it for a particular project. And the problem is, is that they won't pay anything. And they haven't paid anything, and they said, well, we'll vote it, but they won't pay it, because there's still some problems. So whatever that is, we need to get that resolved. And I don't know how we do it, but we need to get it resolved.
We're going through the process.
Yeah. I believe one of the new selectmen, Jimmy Parler, who used to be a, a selectman here in Wareham, I saw him this past weekend at the MMA, and also a couple of the other Bourne selectmen, they are in the process of sitting down, as Derek said, and trying to work it out.
Well, it's not up to them.
But it's up to you and Tom.
Correct.
So they know that, because Tom was at the meeting, and they're trying to figure out some of what's going on.
So do we have a timeframe?
No.
No, that's between the two of them.
Well, that's, just, Mr. Chairman, that, that's, that has to be resolved.
Timeframe could be, yeah, and I'm sorry, the, the timeframe could be going to litigation.
Yeah.
Really?
Timeframe could be anything.
Okay.
So I would rather do it properly and work together, or we can try and, you know, I know things.
Well, nobody wants to go to litigation. We'd soon resolve this issue, obviously, because it's a lot of money owed to town right this minute.
Plus the other.
The town.
Well, according to us, we, we think they owe us a lot of money.
No and yes.
I'm guessing the less said about it, the better at this point. I will say that once it's resolved, we are gonna have to enter into a renewal of the intermunicipal services agreement with them, but this is obviously the big rock in the road to get there.
There's some, there's some really bad info getting to the sewer commissioners. They were told that, that the agreement's up. It is not up. There's a five-year review on that. In fact, the agreement goes on for, I think, another almost decade or so, so.
Two, ten, or 15 years.
Yeah, so the sewer commissioners were told that the, the time is up on it, and there needs to be a new agreement. No, there's a five-year lookback period in there. So I don't know why they keep on being, you know, informed or misinformed of that. It's untrue.
Well, you know, I, I understand, you, you sound irritated, and that's okay. I mean, you're welcome to be irritated, but the fact of the matter is, that this has to all get resolved, whatever the issues are. And if this information is being not correctly related to the sewer commissioners, who have to rely on the information they get, then we need to do something about it.
Yeah.
We need to have this get resolved, whether we have to do something else, or whatever's gonna happen. Because it's not just that, there seems to be a lot of issues that are, and I'm not gonna bring them all up, I got a page full of them here, that seem to be maybe in the same vein, you know, that need to be resolved.
Okay.
And I just, you know, they, they keep, they ask me these questions, and you can't, I just can't go there and keep saying, well, you know, you know, I mean, they get enough of that, you know, and a lot of the committees get enough of that, you know. And they were expecting us to come up with answers, and I, I'd like to give them answers, whatever it is. If it's that, you know, it's being worked on, and it's gonna take another year, or it's gonna take another, whatever, then that's what it is. If it's gonna be whatever, you know what I mean?
Give them five years. Tell them within five years it'll be resolved.
Well, you know, that makes it hard to plan, doesn't it, now?
Yeah.
That makes planning a little difficult.
Very bureaucratic response.
You know, especially since.
That way we will, we won't overpromise and underdeliver.
Well, and especially since they're talking about maybe hooking up some new areas of their own as well, so that's also an issue.
No, they, they have a pocket plant essentially that's going in. There is, there's the, sort of, the, the outflow pipe that's being talked about. I don't know how much Bourne been involved in that, because there's some, some pushback on there too, so.
There's been some pushback on that whole outflow pipe now.
Yeah, they're, they're still heavily involved in it.
So.
So, all right. So I'm just bringing the information forward, and I have a few other things that, questions to ask, and we'll, I'll ask you a couple of them later, because the, I don't think that they're ready to be brought into the public light yet, so.
Why don't you just submit Derek a list, and you get an answer back.
Yeah, we'll have conversation relevant to that. So, but, so I did that anyway. And there's another meeting coming up for, for negotiations with school contracts very quickly here, so we'll be going down pretty soon.
You'll be tough on that, right?
Yeah, I'll be tough on that. Well.
Yeah.
Once the tools are.
Yeah.
What?
Once the tools are.
Yeah, yeah.
Not before.
Yeah, exactly.
Now, are we good?
Yeah, I'm good now. Now you can go forward.
Thank you.
I didn't get any, any of the answers to anything, but I'm, we can go.
You're welcome.
Sure you did.
I got, I got one of these. Hey, what do you think?
I think there's a TV commercial about banks, and they have a guy doing squats, and the woman asks, what'd you get? I got jack squat.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
All right, back to the real world. Marijuana, just as an update for people, again, through the MMA meeting, the possibility of delivery is still up in the air right now. There is no complete agreement what's happening. The governor, basically administration is having thoughts about it. The social clubs is even more of a question. I don't believe the governor at this particular point is really supporting that right now. Supposedly, that was all supposed to be done, finished for November, pushed it off to February, and now they're talking about April and May before they decide that, just for the public to understand that one.
So just, you are just, some people may not understand social club, so.
Well, it would be, basically, if you had a private cigar club, we went into smoke cigars, or, you know, or private type club for a particular thing, you go in, you're a member, and you could smoke marijuana in there. And it would be legal. The other piece under the, basically, there's a new deferral program for property tax coming down for aging, housing aging and stuff. I'll, I'll give Derek the information, the possibility of working to find, actually, they're actually finally realizing that we have a problem with people that are getting older, having places to live, downsizing, et cetera, and not being able to afford a lot of the places. So the state finally has realized we have what we call a housing crisis coming for the elderly as well, and they're starting to look into things to do. And they have a new deferral program, which you probably have seen somewhat of as far as, you know, property taxes and stuff, which the governor's gonna be coming down with some change from what we have right now. So we'll see what happens. Again, it's depends on what everybody's allowed to pass. There was a couple of interesting things from the Cape Group. As everybody knows, Patrick was not very happy about the Airbnb tax.
Nope.
And of course, the Cape is overjoyed, because that's the people who actually pushed this through with an additional 2.75%, which goes to their water pollution issues. They have a $1 billion liability, and they would comply with the federal government, basically for water pollution control. And that's a huge number in order for them, and there's no way for them to generate it. So they're looking at that money as well. What came up during the meeting as well was that there, the people who are recycling cans, glass, et cetera, are going out of business, shutting down, because they can't afford to run their operations with actual people. So unless it can be done automated, they just can't do it. And there was a gentleman there that runs a big one in the Cape, it's just closing. And I guess the DEP is going to allow the crushing of glass and using it for road pavement, among other things. And the other question, talking about the beer bottles and stuff like that, you know, being glass as well, which was interesting. So there's things happening. The Chinese, most people either have heard or not heard, they have this National Sword Act that they passed in China. They will not take any plastics from America anymore for recyclables, because the plastics aren't clean, et cetera, which is wreaking havoc with everybody as far as doing their trash and stuff. I've heard of some of the towns having to go up $100 a month, just in their basic cost per ton. And the numbers are there, and, and there's really no easy solution right now. There's nothing in place. Bourne is fortunate, they have one more cell, I believe, open. So they're good for probably 10 more years, as far as they're concerned for the area. But after that, there's nothing there, and Wareham is gonna have to, somewhere down the line, come up with a Plan B, I guess.
I've asked the, Mr. Chairman, I've asked.
You're working with that group anyways.
Yeah, I've asked the recycling committee to come up and speak to you about it as well.
Be a good idea.
People forget that municipal maintenance funds, about $4,000 a year out of their, for tipping fees for them.
Yeah.
We pay for it. That, their, their tipping fees have tripled. So we ran out of those funds roughly, I think our last payments were made in the end of November, early December. And now they're eating into those funds that we gave them through town meeting, I think the 25,000. So they'll probably, unless they start charging folks, we're probably looking at two, two and a half years for them to operate. The only thing they're getting paid is clean cardboard. Clean cardboard is still a commodity, everything else is basically